Hello, yesterday, yesterday's video. I think I left off as such a very negative thought, yeah, don't think about that. Two thousand nine, uh, wait two, uh, two A M, nine, uh, two. Sorry, uh, Wednesday, October tenth, two thousand twelve, it's two A M and ten minutes. Sounds wrong, I don't know. Um, I had a long day today, I think I had about, uh, I left my home at around, uh, one P M. And I came both, I came back home at one A M, so I had, now I, now I have a chance to do this. Uh, in a sense, it is still some type of work for me. Because this is gonna be a combination of personal chat. And there's gonna be moments where I'm gonna be planning tomorrow's schedule. Because I need to kind of, even maybe, maybe even plan a schedule for the, for the next week or two. Because I need to, I haven't had the time to really and organize myself these past week or two, no, no, not the past week, these past few days, I have not had a chance to organize myself. In terms of, hmm, the things that I need to do. So, what did I do today? Today I took the PATH train. Uh, basically, I was gonna upload a video that I did today, that I went to Trenton using, um, the train from the Secaucus Junction Center to Trenton. And I made the video on my phone, I recorded it off my phone, off my joy phone, just like part of my little travel experience, and just all my own thoughts. And I asked my, uh, I asked my friend after I had to get on my knees and beg him. He has type of guy, but something I'm willing to do without a problem, I have no problem begging people. Especially when I need them to do something that doesn't really require a tremendous amount of their time or energy to do something, but they're just lazy. Hate that about him. He's just flat out lazy, and he accuses me of being lazy. Gets me angry a little bit. Um, so, long story short, he was supposed to put the video that he did on my S D card so I can easily put into my computer, but he failed at that, I don't know how or why. Long story short, he put it on the C D. Great, better than nothing, except I don't have a C D drive in my notebook. So, I won't be able to upload the video because I wanted to upload it tonight to have it done with and not have to worry about it, because it was created today, and it's important for it to be uploaded today. There's no, I'm trying to get like, get this a little bit, I'm getting a little frustrated with him because I'm gonna need him to do some serious work for my campaign. And this is just, this is what I did today, was just, well, not necessarily practice on him, but it's just something I wanted him to do, because he's better at it, he needed to be edited. I'm not a very good editor. Because as you can see, or you've been watching, when I have moments of pauses, it might seem boring, and, uh, it's just might be a little bit unprofessional, but in this case, I think it takes away from the truth of it. That when you edit and splice, when you edit out from, it just takes away from the nature of this, whatever this is. I don't necessarily view this as a type of blog or a video blog, it's more of a a log, this is a log of events for whoever to see. And possibly even for the fourth generation of my family to see, I don't know. Assuming that, I don't know, I haven't really given it that much thought into it. Because I have to assume that Google is gonna be still around. They're still gonna be maintaining their YouTube division, YouTube is still gonna be around. And they're gonna have the server space, uh, to maintain everything. And I have like a, a little bit on the plus side with that, because they do make money off me. So, they do have invested interest in my, my success. Because if this is successful, they make money, so. And I make a little bit of money. Okay. So we got that done at least, so tomorrow I'll just need to find, so this is where it's gonna be uh, part of a, like a working session in terms of my schedule. Tomorrow, at whatever time, I don't know what time. Let me just first begin the date of tomorrow, which is today, because it's two A M, so today is October tenth. And so it's ten, ten, twelve, schedule. Okay, C D. Transfer it or upload it to YouTube, transfer to S D or upload to YouTube, how will I do that? Let me think, I need to either go back to Oleg's home after his work time, which is gonna be five P M. And kinda doing a movie night tomorrow, I'm thinking we should watch Passion of Christ. So let's say, cause before then, I don't think I, I don't know anybody else with a computer. I don't know too many people. So, after five P M, after five P M, I guess, and I'll upload it. I can either use Oleg's computer or I can use Suzie's, uh, laptop. So that is tomorrow, okay. Uh, movie, I mentioned, uh, movie night. And we will do Passion of Christ, and I will call Kay Flynn as well, Passion of Christ. I'm called Kay Flynn, and invite her and her boyfriend, she found out Kay Flynn has a boyfriend. Uh, so with that regard, call Kay Flynn. At the same time, I'm concerned about Kevin, and Kevin spends too much his ti- too much of his time alone, I don't think he's happy. So, call Kevin and also invite Kevin. I don't like people being alone, when I have an opportunity for them to be doing something as a group, it's just, I don't know. There's many times where I've spent my time alone, and I kind of, I guess deep down, wish that I had somebody to spend time with. So, that's why I do that, Kay Flynn plus boyfriend. And need to confirm with Oleg and Suzie, so, uh, optimal time I guess would be to do it around maybe seven or eight P M. Can't do it too late, because people have work in the mornings and I don't wanna, I don't wanna be up so late, it's two A M already. By the time I get this done, get some, by yeah, by the time I get this done, it's gonna be about three thirty A M. So movie night, next. Call, no, call Vladimir at one thirty P M. One thirty P M, because I scheduled to see an apartment at two P M with this guy who's renting out his apartment for seventeen fifty, it's a two-bedroom, two-back-room apartment in a decent area in Cliffside Park, and it's a Russian guy, so it might be easier for me to negotiate and get an understanding, and it seems like an educated person. So it may be easier for me to, to get this apartment thing settled. Uh, because I'm either finding really awful places that should not even exist in this day and age, they need to be bulldozed, and new homes need to be built. Or, uh, the people are just kind of suspicious. I don't know, they're just quite suspicious, or they just don't want some attention. They wanna keep it low-key, low-profile. And that's their right, as landlords, owners, you have that right, so I'm not challenging them. But I need the place that's suitable for me, so. Thank God, there's a market, if there wasn't a market, this would be dreadful. Uh, so call Vladimir, three P M. Let me just put the address here, like the spin, use the spin, uh. Okay, next. Next, 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 for tomorrow, what else I should do? I should contact Oliver, because um, I haven't heard from him in two day, two days, and think tomorrow is gonna be the next day that I won't hear from him, so I need to email him and see what's happening. Because I sent him the money already. So I hope, not that I hold the money, but I sent him a deposit of two hundred dollars, so I hope he didn't just like, oh, I got the two hundred dollars and then dipped. So to speak, it would be terrible, you know, I don't think he would do something like that, but I am afraid that this might be over his head, or at least extraordinarily challenging. Uh, it's gonna really challenge his skills. And, and his potential to learn whatever it, whatever it is that he needs to learn to, to accomplish certain aspects of this of this, of this endeavor that we have. What else do we have here? So, email Oliver. At the same time, uh, I'm a little concerned about my hair, because I want it to grow out more. And in doing so, I can, um, neglect, not necessarily neglect, but avoid cutting it. Uh, because I'm afraid to go to a hairstylist, a barber, anybody, because I'm afraid they will fuck it up. Because I want my hair to be long, but at the same time, there's certain aspects of my hair that is uneven. It needs to be evened out, that I'm afraid they're gonna fuck it up, and it's gonna get too short, and then it's not gonna be long enough when I need it to be long so I can begin to wear a ponytail. So. And that's something that is hindering my ability to go out and start, I mean, do the work with Kevin in regards to Kevin taking some perfo- professional photographic photos of me for, to place on a business card and to place on certain design material, though maybe I don't necessarily, it's still October. It might be useful for me to begin my official door-to-door campaign operation in early spring, so in that regard, it's nothing so too pressing, because there is still a lot of research that I need to do, there's a lot of reading I still need to do. There's a lot of, uh, understanding I need to do. So if I start early spring, it should be okay. Then I'll have, uh, the spring, I'll have the summer, and then I'll have the autumn, three seasons where cause winter is gonna get cold and it's gonna be uncomfortable to walk around. Plus, I still have this idea to commission, uh, I know this girl, and she's, she's a, she used to sell clothing, and she used to sell it on eBay. And from what I, from what I understand, it was quite profitable for her, but that she ran into a few hiccups and just kind of lost interest or began, or just began late to be lazy. Oh, and I kind of just let it rot, and then she just, it all just fell apart. So I was thinking of seeing if I could commission her to design a piece of clothing for me that I would like to begin to wear as a candidate when I do, uh, when I do campaigning, door-to-door campaigning or during events, I would have a special clothing that I would wear, and I have given it some thought. And even when I get elected, that I would attempt to set forth some sort of an idea for people who are in government as leaders, as representatives, mayor, council, you remember the council of the, the county government or member of the ca- of the state government. Hell, even a governor or the president, you should wear some type of clothing that exemplifies you as a member of government and as a temporary representative of government. Because I don't like that everybody looks like a businessman, other than the fact that they have a little pin here. Uh, besides that, you can't tell if it's the C E O of Apple or if it's the President of the United States, I don't know, not the C E O of Apple, but uh, like a bank, just, I just don't like that there's a businessman looks like a, somebody who's in government, they wear the same clothing, and it's not, there's nothing you should not have that, much the same way that a doctor wears a robe. Doctor's robe to say, you know, I'm not a person, I'm a doctor. A judge wears a robe, because that's not a person, that's a, that's law. He's the ma- he makes the final decision on law, what is law and what's not, he makes that call. So firefighter, police officer, they should have certain, they do, they all do, like I said. To represent that they're, you know, of course, obviously, they're people, but for the time being, they're not. They're members of, they're servants, they're members of agents of government doing various services and functions to the people, as the people prescribed at some point, or they still prescribe that, this thing, so. I want to, at first, my idea was to have some sort of a robe that I would put on. But then that might be a little weird, so then I, now I'm thinking, what about a gown? If I were to wear a certain gown over whatever it is that I'm wearing, how would that, how would that, it might be like a comfortable gown, obviously, like, almost like my bathrobe. Like something, you know, something comfortable, and something, something professional, and something modern. But something also very symbolic, it has to be symbolic and it has to represent government. And it has to represent a high ideal, like this ideal. And that's what government is, and not necessarily what government is, but that's the idea of government, it's an ideal. It's a constant ideal, and everybody who enters government or should enter in government, or whatever it is that they do in life, you should attempt to always hold it to higher, to an ideal. You always wanna do the best you can possibly do. Even though it's, in some cases, it's impossible. Not strive for perfection, but strive towards this higher purpose. Um, so I don't know if I should, at least talk to her about it. I can't spend too much money on it, um, I think it'd be reasonable for me to spend on something like this. I don't know. Like, two hundred dollars, but it's something that would require her to spend, I don't know. A good solid forty to ninety hours. Because it's not just the first go, it's, you do it, and you see how it looks like, it might be bad, that, that, the material is ruined. You do it again, and that's where the cost comes in, I don't know how much it would cost, and I don't know what textile to use. What would be the ideal textile, uh, textile or ideal, uh, you know, cotton, maybe. Yeah, cotton maybe. What's this made of? This is comfortable. No, not really, but the pants, I've, uh, stretched cotton, maybe, I don't know. So, let's see if I could write this and to- at least talk to her, see if she has any ideas. So her name is Lori, contact Lori about a gown, or at least maybe she already has an idea. Because she just gave birth to a child, so she's spending a lot of her time at home alone, raising a child. You know, taking care of the baby, and her, uh, boyfriend, the father of the child, is out there working. It might be good for her to kind of, um, get started with that, if she, cause I spoke to her, she wants to resume with it, and she said she had some problems with. Well, the initial cost of it, to do something like that is quite expensive, because you need to get the material. But then I had this idea, you know, when you do something like this, there's usually a deposit for the material. Somebody commissions you to create a piece of clothing that, um, well, there's an understanding that you have to get the material if you don't have it, or at least, um, or use your own material. But what happens if the person changes their mind while you already used the material and began working on the project? Then the person just freely, just doesn't pay, and the person who's working loses out. So, there's a normal thing to have a deposit. So, contact Lori, I don't know, but, I see the cost is, I don't wanna be crazy with this and, and have it come out to an extraordinary amount of cost. And I have some experience with this, because I saw, uh, there was a time when for Halloween, I, uh, my book fell with the paper, there was a time, uh, one Halloween ago, Halloween's coming up again. Uh, I was researching to see if I could get the Link costume, because I purchased myself an Ocarina. And there was a, a costume I wanted, and I was looking it up to see, well, the costume I wanted was, I wanted it to be as real as possible. And I found that costume, and there was a gr- a girl who had a website up, and she makes these costumes. And the cost for the costume was one thousand dollars, and it looked fantastic, it looked, uh, as a real, well, it looked pretty, pretty real, as if it was some character, a video game character, uh, Link is from Zelda. So. Yeah. So it might be reasonable to spend anywhere from hundred to three hundred dollars on this. But I need to consider and be reasonable with the cost of it, because if she spends forty hours working on this, it would not be fair for her to make a profit of fifty dollars. But it would be reasonable for her to make two hundred dollars from this. Because it, first of all, it gives her, um, well, I could serve as a reference to her future endeavors in, in this business. Yeah. She could, you know, this, this is a lot, this, I was talking with somebody. One of the most important things if you're in college or university, or you're planning to go to college or university, one of the most important things that I think a lot of people neglect is, when you're in college or you're in uni- university, you have the ability to begin building a professional network of people and being around like-minded individuals. And you need to capitalize on that whenever you are in that setting. Because once you get out of that setting, things change, and it's, you're not as, um, so it won't be as easy for you to find people. Um, and even in, in high school level, like for instance, at this point, I'm twenty-seven years old. The class that I graduated with, one or, at least one or two people from my class that I graduated with are probably doctors. Now, as I get older, I will need to use doctors. Even now, I need to use doctors. I just keep, I went to the dentist about a week or two weeks ago. Uh, maybe one of those people were to become a dentist, and that in the sense that I would go to them because they are good or they're better, it, I mean, at all, I have to make the proper, you know, I have to make an educated uh, decision if they would be better than my current doctor. But it's not just simply about that, but I could go to them, say hello, do you remember me, la la la, have a conversation, and then we can exchange contacts, and maybe there is something that they could tell me about, let's say dentistry, that is, um, they're more likely to tell me because they have an earlier connection with me. And it'll be something useful for me to know, as opposed, and, and it goes, go, and it goes both ways. Where I could tell them something useful that in, that will impact their life, that they could make a decision around what I would tell them. Hmm. I mean, that would just be one of the many reasons, it was just simply one of the simplest mo- one, this is just the simplest reason of many. How this is important to have a professional network of people that you can go, you can go to for questions, for, to exchange information. Or to simply employ. When it goes vice versa. Somebody can go like, oh, you, you know what? I make so much money that I cannot be bothered with shoveling my driveway. Oleg, you have a shovel, and it's something that you wanna do this winter. Come to my, uh, house, when it comes, when it snows very heavily, I will pay you a hundred dollars. And I'll go, okay, fantastic, I'll do it. So, it goes both ways, there's certain things that I can do to people, and there's certain things that they could do to me. But that's outside of the campaign, because once I involve this campaign, I cannot offer any of my services to people in this, in a way where, um, by offering my services to people, that it would be in a, in a form of oh, I do this for you for free, and then there's some mutual understanding, or the idea is you're gonna go vote for me, that's very wrong. That happens, but it's very wrong. I mean, ideally, it should not happen, but it does happen, that's the reality, and I don't know, it's, it's just, it's, it's almost natural to in some sense, because you know, some, I would imagine that some people would not even really care what I plan on doing. They just wouldn't care, they would just simply be glad that there's somebody out there doing something, and they would vote for me without any other, uh, inclination or any other thought or plan or my theory or my mythology for accomplishing this or that. Uh, no other reason than just simply me knocking on their door, saying hello. Except, it just, that's the just touched, it is what it is. Hmm. I just hope it's gonna be enough time for me. So let's think for a moment, if I were to start, uh, let's see. Let's start, let's say I start in March, right, actually, let's start, let's say I officially start campaigning in March. March is, I don't, I didn't count this, one second, so it's October, November. Okay, January is the first month, February, March, third month. Third month, and then the election is on the eleventh month, so I have about, let's say I have a solid six months. Right? Six months, six months worth of time. In six months, that's, let's just say that's a hundred and eighty days. A hundred and eighty days, then we'll take out the calculator. Calculator. Calculator, one hundred and eighty days, um, times, let's say I spend ten hours a day. Times ten hours a day, that comes out to eighteen hundred hours. Now within the within the hours of the day, there is sixty minutes. So, sixty minutes times eighteen hundred. That comes out to one oh eight thousand minutes that I have to do door-to-door campaigning, and then I divide that number by and then I divide that number by see, there's four towns, I don't have the, uh, oh, sorry, there are four towns, I don't have the census data from, so let's say so let's say a hundred and four, say a hundred and forty thousand people, let's say a hundred and forty thousand people. So let's say a hundred and forty thousand people divided by that. So we divide that by a hundred and forty thousand people. That comes out to point seven seven of a minute. So it comes about three-fourths of a minute, so I have forty-five seconds to spend with each person. I have forty-five seconds, including travel time. I have forty five seconds including travel time, including walking up to a house or walking up to an apartment, pressing the button, waiting. I have forty five seconds to be spent with each individual person. That's assuming that all these people uh live separately. That's okay, and that's also assuming that I'm gonna have no other people helping me doing door to door. Um it's not that crazy. No, I did this incorrectly. Wait, I need to go back a little bit, one eighty days times oh yeah, I'm gonna be spending. Ten hour right, one hundred and eighty uh I did the math correctly, one hundred and eighty days times. Uh ten hours a day, one one thousand eight hundred times sixty. One thousand, yeah, okay, I did the math correctly. That's but that's again. I hope you know I don't plan to be alone doing this. And I mean, if I need to do ten hours a day, seven days a week. I guess I'm gonna have to be prepared to do that. But again, I don't I don't expect it to be. That lonely in my campaign, I'm gonna be unable to find any assistance. I have this thing I'm carrying around, I'll share with you. Like it's a fortune cookie, it says everywhere you choose to go, friendly faces will greet you. And so far examining my life. I've never had problems with that. Cause there's still you know, there's still a lot of tremendous amount of work that needs to be done on my side. I know I keep saying that, but it's it really is true, I mean this is not something that you just wake up and you do. There's a lot of preparation needs to take place, a lot of preparing and. Because I have no political party, it's it's even more harder. Because part I mean it's it's a part of it is like as if I need to build my own political party, but not really. I just need to teach these people. And make sure, I mean that's something I have to write down at some point. I'm entirely against the idea of a political party. It's the worst possible idea that anybody ever could have possibly thought of. If polit- a political party maybe is even worse than Adolf Hitler, and I can say that. Something provocative and striking, people are gonna be like. If that's what it needs to, if that's what needs to take place, then that's what needs to take place. I'm getting naked. Not really. I met someone on the on the train station, I don't think I really, I didn't speak about that in the video. And I'll speak about it here, he was a really nice construction worker, very educated, a very interesting person. He did a few interesting things with his life. Actually. This is not such an interesting story to tell. It's actually quite sad and I don't wanna talk about it. There's a lot of sadness in all of this. I'm in my creative mode. You're extraordinarily lucky today to participate in the creative mind. Alright, October Eve. Okay, October tenth. Two thousand twelve. There is a lot of sadness in all of this. There is a lot. Sadness. In all of this. It is a requirement. It is um require your meant. It is a requirement. Of the endeavor. The endeavor. How do you spell endeavor, E N D E? Let me look it up. And there's one more word I wanna talk about. E N. D E A V O U R? No. Let's find out, Googled it, oh endeavor, yeah. E N D E A V O U R, yep, I was right. I just wanted to make sure, I don't like to ma- I don't like to make spelling mistakes and I do rarely. But when I do, it's it's embarrassing and that's I wish to have uh somebody who can proofread. Some of my writings, um it is a requirement of the endeavor of. The public life. Of the life of servitude, there is a requirement of endeavor of the life. Of public. Servitude. Because there's a lot of sad stuff that I'm gonna come across with. It's gonna be a lot of sadness, there's gonna be a lot of despair, there's gonna be a lot of hopelessness. And. I'm gonna be coming across a lot of pessimism, a lot of cynicism. So I'm gonna begin with all those things um. A lot of sadness, I don't know, a lot of despair. Despair. Hopelessness. Hopelessness. Cynicism. How do you spell cynicism is a little tricky word to spell too, S Y N I S C S M? S I, no, I spelled it wrong. It's S I S S Y N I C S I S M? C Y N I C I. S M, so despair, hopelessness. What else? Unfairness. These are just some of the words that I'm using to to as I meet other people. That are in position of despair, of hopelessness, of cynicism, of unfairness. What else, I think that's it, there's nothing else um. Being a victim of something. Basically. I guess in all essence. Are we all not victims of something? In essence. Are. We not all. Victims. Of something. I mean, there's a few things that we can all agree on, everybody regardless of where you live in the world. Getting your heart broken. Being in a situation where somebody wrongs you. Or somebody insulted you and made you feel bad. Or seeing somebody and feeling bad for somebody. Or feeling that somebody out there has it better than you. Or. Wanting something but not having the resources. To have it or the courage. For instance, guys, you see a pretty girl and you wanna come up and say hello, but you're scared. You're shy. I mean, I think that with that for the guys, I think everybody at some point. Felt that way. It took me a while to kinda get over that, I'm still kind of a little on edge of it, but. I don't know. If I were to go back, I think in my life. Say to when I was maybe fifteen or sixteen. I think I would really. Have capitalized on having more sex. Having more sex with more people. I don't know. I don't know if that's such a good thing though. Yeah, I don't know, maybe it's not such a good thing. Or at least. Tried to love or put myself in a position. In a lot in just how basically I guess hmm would have had more relationships with girls. I don't think I've had many relationships with girls, only a couple. They're all very serious, I think, that I did have. I think some people don't have that at all. Even though they might. Had sex with more girls than me. But to. I guess on some level being in a position of love. I think I have more points. Email. From oh subscription. I've been examining my uh. All my the people, I've been losing more subscribers than I've been gaining gaining. That's okay, because this is quite serious, all of this is. Yeah, on this point, not necessarily all of it's gonna be all very serious, but. Like the thing with Trenton, I think it's quite exciting, it's pretty fun to watch. Oh like it's just stupid, it's not, it's spoiled. Or he doesn't get it. Okay, I think I'm done with this. Uh for the time being, I'm gonna just upload this, it's almost three AM. I think that's a pretty healthy schedule for tomorrow. Take care of the apartment. I mean, not really, I mean, there's a lot more stuff that I need to do that I shouldn't do tomorrow. But I don't need to kill myself every single day. Cause there's a lot of thinking I need to that need to take place in my brain. Oh, that oh I'll I can add something, uh for the next board meeting. Of Bergen County, I plan to have a speech, not necessarily a speech, but something off the paper, a little bit more in depth. To share with them and every day, maybe I might do it tonight. Cause I spent last night kind of thinking about it for two hours in my bed, I had trouble sleeping. So write. Letter. To board. Of county. Public. Hearing. I should probably get involved with the locals. Public meetings. I think they do them once a month, should at least find out when they do. Like get to meet some of these people. Not meet them, but put a face to them and kind of spend some time and I s- that's the oh it's more work for me, but. To kinda get an understanding of uh who they are. What is it that they're doing, what is it that they want? Uh are they honest, and just some basic things because I need to. Well. I'm gonna need to be able to work with them, even though if they're not honest, I'm gonna still need to. Uh sit down with them and talk with them and come up with some sort of resolution or some sort of uh idea. And then go with it. And see if we could make the idea run. Because um what they want, all of them, is not very far from what I want. Or what we want. It's just that they have a more. Distant way of looking at it maybe. Than what the average person, the average citizen, the average resident. Expect of them. See, there's an expectation of people like this. And that expectation is not being met. For a multitude of reasons. I know two weeks ago maybe or three weeks ago, I was very adamant on. Just simply going with the idea that everybody in government is just needs to be replaced. Basically. And that's not necessarily true as I'm beginning to see that. Well, in the case of this Bergen County. Well, I've given it some thought that the reason that oh I'm gonna find out. I'm gonna find out my questions, I'm gonna ask them, is is this a punishment or to somebody or. Is this the best idea that you have to reduce the debt and to balance the budget? Because I think and I I hope. That the people of the county government have come to the understanding that debt is bad. That is not a good idea, that is a product. And if government becomes sucked into debt, the government will collapse. I hope they're under the understanding that the American dollar is on the decline. And if the American dollar crashes, all life here is gonna be in chaos. So I uh I suspect that they have come to that understanding. And their and their best idea to it is to eliminate a police agency that's responsible for. An array of services and functions that just make life what it life is here. I've also kind of, I'm gonna begin. If I meet people from outside of the county to to get them to move into the county. Honestly, I think it's a good idea. It's a win-win situation for everybody. If I'm if I recruit people to live in this area, I think it's a win-win situation for everybody. Uh for me. It's a win-win situation for for all the businesses, it's a win-win situation for the government, more tax revenue. There's so much vacant, there's so many vacant homes, and that's everywhere really. I mean, part of part of republic is um. Prosperity. From a republic sprouts, republic a republic sprouts prosperity naturally. We just need to reignite the republic in the same fashion that when I uh made the commitment, which I plan to still. Sit down and. Sit down and have it done. Um the video for the United Nations in putting together. Scenes of people. Um saying or reading, I don't know, maybe I can maybe get it even more creative than the original. Um each article of the United United Nation Declaration of in uh the Declaration of Human Rights. And then putting it on CDs and sending them out to all of their respective ambassadors of the. Member nations of the UN that are scattered around in New York City. Okay. There's probably something else I should do tomorrow. Um well, I might as well write this in the uh. I hope I'm gonna be able to sleep, but I think I will, okay, I'm gonna end it here, I'm gonna smoke a cigarette, begin to upload for this video. And maybe listen to some music and feel tired in my eyes. Um adios. Live a strong, healthy, useful life.